Good evening, it is 5:30, so we're going to call a regular council meeting to order. Remind you to turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate, and let's stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, would you go ahead and take the roll?
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda: minutes from special meeting number 34 on November 14, 2020, regular meeting number 35 on November 17, 2020, and special meeting number 36 on November 20, 2020 as presented. Acknowledge October financial statement and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Approve the appointment of Karina Cordova to the position of police officer effective on or about December 14, 2020. Authorize city staff to work with Piper Sandler on consulting geo-bonds, bond issue or projects. The proceeds will be for the city's fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 CIP projects, and to refinance existing debt previously issued through the issuance of Piper Sandler engagement letter. Resolution number 245-2020, sitting December 15, 2020, as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property described as Lot 15 and the east one-half of 14-foot alley adjacent to Lot 15 in Henzie and Hedrick's addition to the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, commonly known as 1033 West Second Street. Beer and/or liquor applications, none.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll need a, we'll need a motion to approve the regular agenda tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Honorable Dean, our agenda, I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator, to talk about the priority-based budgeting.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So, wanted to kind of update the council on where we're at with the process. A couple weeks ago, we had worked with staff to develop an inventory of the services, also known as programs, that each of the various departments delivers. And so, they're in the process of turning that into myself, and we got a team of myself, Director of Finance Kayla Mulder, and accountant Tina Jaeger's. We've gone through some training on the priority-based budgeting, and so we'll look through the inventory of services returned to us, look at for any comments, suggestions, fine-tune that. The next step of that process will be to cost that out, which means to assign the various personnel and non-personnel costs to each of those services. And at that same time, I'll be getting information to the council to kind of help determine the priorities that we're looking at, and that'll be coming from the comprehensive plan, which was just done, and the retreat process, which we went through, to help that, narrow that down to priorities that will then be scoring those various services against. So that's kind of where we're at in the process, and we're looking at having this kind of wrapped up, or at least a first deliverable draft to look at towards the end of this month, beginning of next month.
Okay. Any questions for Phil, or any comments? Thank you, Phil. We'll look forward to seeing that. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Bids for the Beach Atumwa beverage contract. Recommendation, accept the non-exclusive bid from Atlantic Bottling Company Coca-Cola for the beach beverage contract.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second. Good evening, Jean. We have you to give us an update on that, so go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids for the Beach Atumwa beverage contract were opened at 10:00 a.m. on November 19, 2020. The bid from Mahaska Bottling Company, which is Pepsi, was disqualified because it was received 34 minutes late. KDP, which is Dr. Pepper, noted in their bid that they did not want to provide vending equipment for the concession stand, which means that the only option is Atlantic Bottling Company or Coca-Cola. The prices bid from Coca-Cola were competitive with the other companies, and they do have an office on Gateway Drive. This was bid as a non-exclusive contract, and KDP will still be allowed to have a vending machine in the lobby of the beach as they have for the past five years. This contract with Coca-Cola will begin on January 1, 2021, and last for five years.
Any questions for Jean?
I have a couple, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
What is the, is there a commission price that we receive on the vending equipment?
We do not receive a commission price on the equipment itself, no.
Or the sales, I'm sorry. So if somebody buys a bottle of soda out of the vending machine, do we receive a commission on that sale?
For each bottle, we're making a profit of about 50 to 60 cents per bottle.
Okay. And what's the, what do we have as a profit on beverages that are sold from the concession stand?
Approximately 30%.
Which would be roughly how much on a, so for example, a 20-ounce drink?
On a 20-ounce drink, we'd make a profit of about a dollar, a dollar and 25, right around that area.
Okay. So, just something to consider for down the road, why would we put something, a vending machine in there that would make 60 cents when we could make a dollar off of the sale from the concession stand?
Well, the reason we have the vending machines is because of the off-season during the fall and winter months, when we have swim meets and birthday parties, they still want to buy pop in the lobby when the concession stand is closed during the fall and winter months.
And I think the price point is a little better for the fountain drink versus the bottle?
Yes.
So people would probably buy the fountain drink over the bottle, just because of the, it'd be a cheaper price.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, Jean.
Approving the professional services agreement for engineering services between HDR Engineering Incorporated and the city of Atumwa for the water pollution control facility aeration study. Recommendation, approve the professional services agreement for engineering services.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation.
As presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Larry. Larry Seals, Director of Public Works, have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In July of 2018, the water pollution control facility switched to a BOD-only operation mode. Since switching, Water Pollution Control Crew has adjusted existing aeration equipment and pumping rates to optimize operations. This has resulted in significant cost savings by reducing the amount of electricity used. These operational changes have gone on, or gone about as far as they can within the limitations of the existing equipment setup. HDR Engineering has been our plant engineer since 2016. They consulted during the operational change and have a thorough understanding of operations of the plant. Under this agreement, HDR will assess existing equipment and controls and develop a strategy for dissolved oxygen control that efficiently optimizes the treatment. Prepare an opinion of cost, calculate a payback period, and provide recommendations for field testing to verify the study's conclusions. This is a $10,187, do not exceed contract. We have budgeted $15,000 for engineering services in fiscal year '21. All these funds are available.
Any questions for Larry?
Larry, I had a question, and not to put you on the spot, but do you know, like, approximately the percentage we've saved on the electricity with the change to BOD?
I believe it's in 27 months, 86,000 or 87,000.
Excellent.
Actually, I do have that with me.
I was just curious what kind, you know, to put in perspective, the cost savings there.
Well, if you remember on our presentation, and we do plan on, Phil's been updating this, one of the things that I wanted was the average BOD inflow at our plant, for we could cover that of what capacity we actually have for sale. Give me two seconds, because I actually have that.
Yeah, I remember going over, but I think it's always good when we can celebrate a win on cost savings.
Absolutely. If you remember, one of the big things that was always discussed in kind of the comparison that we would use, by switching operations, we took, and the analogy that some of the engineers used to use was, instead of driving your car 90 all day long, you're at 55 now, so you actually extend the life of a lot of your equipment, pumps, and everything else that's associated with it. It was 86,000 in the past 27 months, and we have a lot of other information that we want to provide in the near future. We just was waiting for one more piece. I will point out that the reason that we want to do this on the aeration is currently they take hand readings. We're running two of the, of the VLRs. We had, for instance, then, let's see, we were running approximately 2,960 pounds on Tuesday, and then by Friday, it jumped to 10,398. There's a lag time by the time you turn up your blowers, by the time you do your sampling, depending on how many times you're doing it. This will help shorten those lags, either going in or coming out of the air, and try to better regulate our target air in both VLRs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Larry? Okay. Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 247-2020, authorizing the mayor to sign the airport capital improvement program, data sheets, and related documents, and authorize staff to submit the data sheets and related documents to the Iowa DOT, then to the FAA for the fiscal years 2022 to 2028. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 247-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Chris Cobbler. Go ahead and give your report.
Thank you, Mayor. City must submit an annual airport improvement plan to the Iowa DOT, and then it is sent off to the FAA. This plan serves as pre-application for the FAA's grant program. The updated project plan includes apron improvements for 2022, taxiway LED lighting for 2023, three-box hanger construction for 2024, rebuild Terminal Avenue, that's the airport entrance road for 2026, and snow removal equipment acquisition for 2028. Following information is included in the plan with amounts requested dollars and local match for each project. This has been approved by the Airport Advisory Board.
Any questions for Chris? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Resolution number 249-2020, authorizing the partial redemption of outstanding sewer revenue capital loan notes, Series 2010, dated January 27, 2010. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 249-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Kayla. You have the floor.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is a loan refunding and refinancing. It was a COBLO loan, and with the better interest rates and better process that we're following right now, we thought that this would be a great time to recall that and refund it.
Any questions for Kayla? Okay. Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 250-2020, set December 15, 2020 at 5:30 p.m. as the date for a public hearing on the proposed authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $6 million general obligation capital loan notes of the city for essential corporate purposes and the hearing on the issuance thereof. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 250-2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Go ahead.
At first here, I'm going to talk about these next three resolutions, 250, 251, and 252, because I want to kind of explain the difference and why we have to do these in separate hearings. The first is to be in compliance with state law, but to be in compliance with federal law, we will do only two bond issuances. The first one that I'll talk about is Resolution 250-2020. It is for essential corporate purposes, and we are asking on this one for council to authorize issuance of up to, not to exceed $6 million. The debt will be for the cost of equipping the police and fire departments, specifically their fleet, for the patrol vehicles, and a fire truck and their equipment. And the, also with this one would be the acquisition, restoration, or demolition of abandoned, dilapidated, or dangerous buildings. The dilapidated building program that we have been running, we have a match of that of $100,000 a year, and that has been typically paid out of the general fund as well. And so, we're going to, this would allow us to bond for that match, to continue to do that program, to give some relief to the general fund. It also, this would also, could be used for structures of property, the construction, reconstruction, and repairing of any street and levy improvement. Specifically, we have some levy improvements that we need to do, that we've been notified, and I think that Larry's talked to you guys about, by the Army Corps of Engineering. So this would cover those costs. The acquisition and installation and the repair of sidewalks, also some of our ADA compliance sidewalks that we have to do, specifically our sidewalk drop program, that is about $120,000 a year. It could help with covering storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water services, street lighting, traffic control devices, including the acquisition of any real estate needed for the foregoing purposes and the removal of replacement and dead-end diseased trees. The reconstruction extension improvement of the airport and rehabilitation for, and improvement of city parks, including facilities, equipment, and improvements commonly found in parks. And one of the big projects that we're looking at would be the shower house. We do have some grant money, about 50% of that, that has been said to be a match for that, and we're hoping to get more grants. But this would allow us to use this bonding issuance to pay for that shower house, and a couple other things, too, in the parks. And then this would also include that refunding and refinancing of that 249 that we just discussed, for the Series 211, dated back to October 19 of 2011. So, on that one, that's what that one would be covering. Do you want me to go over the other two specifically before?
I think we probably should take them one at a time.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to keep, are there any questions on this one for Kayla?
Just one quick question.
Yep.
The portion of the proceeds of this that would go back to the bond issuance from 2011, will there be a difference in the interest rates on that?
Yes. I don't remember exactly what that one was, but I think that most of those were around the 4%, and these will most likely be around the 2%. It depends on what it's going to be in January when we actually bond for these, but I'm hoping that that will be the difference.
Okay, perfect. And then one question, something that you had said about the sidewalk drop program.
Yes.
And I know Larry had mentioned last year, and I'm sorry I've forgotten at this point, but you had given a percentage complete roughly in the city of Atumwa for what we had done last year. What are we at now, roughly?
It'd be a guess at this point. I think we're nine years in, and we've had different sizes of projects, and we still have to weigh like 11th year to pick up all the orphans that are outside of like separation areas. I don't know. I will get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kayla?
Yes, Kayla. So, the $6 million, and you identified some of the areas, but we as a council then will eventually receive some outline of what those specific areas are?
Yes. We'll be more specific on that, and more specific on the repayment schedule and all of that once we get through this first process, and we'll be working with Piper Sandler to get you all the specific information.
But to this point, you're just pretty sure that the things that we've had some discussion on and so forth?
Yeah.
We can do it for, for under the 6%?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think it's good that council will see a detailed list when you get closer to actually going out for sale, and we can then determine what we need to prioritize, because there's never enough money, it seems like. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 251-2020, set December 15, 2020 at 5:30 p.m. as the date for a public hearing on the proposed authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city for essential corporate purposes and the hearing on the issuance thereof. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 251-2020.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Kayla.
Okay, so this loan is general corporate purposes bearing interest to not exceed 9% per centum per annum. And this is a program that's different from the first one, because it's more for the welfare of citizens, including our facade grant programs, or our economic development programs, such as the Healthy Neighbors programs, that, I know that Zach recently had even given you guys some updates on that. So both of those programs, again, it's given the general fund some relief for the next couple of years, and so that way we can continue those programs. It also will help with equipping the Parks Department and improvements and renovations to the Bridgeview Center. This also could include some grant matches that would be something that would be brought forth before council recommended, recommendations from either Phil or myself for some of those asks that come. I know that we've had some asks that if came to council, and Council Monroe, you've asked, you know, what are we going to cut? Well, this allows us to not cut the general fund. We can have some funding available to support some of those initiatives that we had identified in our strategic planning and our strategic goals that we had a couple of weeks ago, some, you know, or if anybody else comes to the council, or to Phil, or myself, or the mayor that would like some sort of cash match, or something that provides something to our citizens.
For example, would this include like the World Series ask, though?
Yes. It could include something like that.
So Kayla, what does that mean, not to exceed 9%?
Well, since this is for general purposes, it's a taxable, instead of, like on the first one, it's not a taxable bond.
So it could be up to 9%?
Well, taxable, not what our interest rate is.
Right. So that's why I cleared on that?
No, but that's okay.
But it's, people looking to purchase the bonds need to know if it's taxable or not taxable, and then what percentage up to that could be.
Yes.
So you're getting a different value for this particular set of bonds versus the other ones that are in front of you.
Right, and these types of bonds are limited to that $700,000.
Yeah.
Dollar amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 252-2020, set December 15, 2020 at 5:30 p.m. as the date for a public hearing on the proposed authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city for essential corporate purposes and the hearing on the issuance thereof. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 252-2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The, this issuance will be to provide funds to pay costs of the construction, reconstruction, enlargement, improvement, and equipping city hall, the fire stations, police stations, and our recreational areas, such as the beach. This bonding would be for some of that maintenance that we, that the engineering department, Dwight has been working on a schedule for a maintenance program, and specifically like here at city hall, rough repairs, masonry repairs. This bond would help us extend the life of facilities, so that way you don't have a large project, like what we had to do at the beach. So it would be, you know, extending the life of projects at the beach, so that way we, you know, of the projects that we just completed at the Law Center, our portion that we're responsible for, this would help us pay for that portion if we have some of those facility maintenance things that we need to do at these locations. So that's the difference between this one. And again, this one is a taxable one, and the most that we can do is $700,000.
Any questions?
Comment and a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Comment, first of all, thank you for thinking about preventative maintenance. It's probably going to save the city a lot of money in the long run, unlike the situation we had at the beach. Secondly, what, after these all go through and the dust settles, what were, what will our bonding and lending capacity be at that point?
Like in total?
Yeah.
We still, I mean, we're not even close to the threshold of the 50-some percent that we're.
Okay, perfect.
But I'm not sure what that percentage is right now.
We can give the council that long-term debt sheet off of the state, and we'll get that calculated.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, if I may, and Phil, maybe this is at you, but since I've been on the council at times when we didn't feel we had the money for maintenance, and that put us in a position we got to, and now we're going to be bonding for maintenance. So Phil, in the future, as we develop a budget that's based on prioritizing things, would we include then in those prioritizing, in fact, that we will understand that things need to be maintained, so money put aside at the time, instead of having to bond for it later?
That would definitely be a goal, and as we'll see in the item next here, that was one of the things we talked about at the retreat, and one of our main goals, to look at a multi-year budget, multi-year capital planning, and that's where bonding and other revenue sources come into play. So yes, that's definitely, you know, part of the planning, the preventive maintenance, those things that are important to the city, to make sure that we can keep them and reduce costs of the large-scale projects, or large-scale degradation of materials, items that we, you know, utilize.
Thank you.
And I feel that we have a really good maintenance schedule already set up, that the engineering staff and Dwight have put together, and so I think that we have a good idea of the needs that we currently have, and then future needs. I mean, some of this stuff goes out five years, 10 years, that needs to be done on that schedule. It's just that- that when he put that schedule together a couple of years ago, you know, there, it wasn't funded. So we just need to play a little bit of catch-up on that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Resolution number 257, 2020, adopt the executive summary prepared following the 2020 Leadership Goal Setting Strategic Planning Work Session for the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 257, 2020.
Is there a motion?
The recommendation is presented.
Second. Thank you.
Hey, so a quick update for the public and reminder to the council, on Saturday, November 14th of this year, the city council and senior-level staff met for a work session to identify goals and conduct a strategic planning session for the next couple of years, that being remainder of this year and into 2021 and 2022. Results of this session were formulated into the executive summary, and that was attached to the packet, so it was available for review and pending the adoption of the city council. That document then would set the path forward for city staff in navigating city services for that period of time. And then, as part of that resolution, we're basically looking to have the council adopt the executive summary as presented, and then have myself work on developing an action plan, which city staff and elected officials would work towards collaboratively to implement those goals that were identified within the summary. There are about, I think there's 20 goals that were identified, and they're ranked in accordance to the vote totals, and where there were ties, council votes trumped over the staff votes, just for matter of breaking those ties. And as a legislative body, you set the agenda that we follow. So that was why that was used as a tiebreaker. For the public's benefit, a couple of the top ones, the very top one was creating that multi-year budgeting and capital planning, and then use priority budgeting. So that received the most votes overall. That's one of the things that we're working towards currently and will continue to. Improve cooperation with community partners, establish new revenue streams, looking at ways to grow our way out of our current fiscal challenges, and then creating policies and incentives for infield development to increase tax base. So those were the top five that were identified out of that morning session.
Any questions for Phil? You've all had that in your packet, had a chance to look at it, and I'd compliment the council on a good Saturday morning work. That was well-done, and I think it's given us some good material to work from and to work with Phil and the staff on.
Yeah, if I may, Phil. By the way, I thought, being there that morning, the session went very well. I thought our facilitator did a really good job. And as I read through the packet toward the back, then it identifies council role and city administrator role, various things. But I noticed, for instance, for council, it identified that we hire the city administrator. It didn't say anything about that we hire the clerk and the attorney. Was that just a kind of a synopsis of what each, I mean, we could go to our policy to look further, so I was just curious.
Yeah, these were not discussed specifically at that morning session. These were added in by Elizabeth, so they are, I mean, we can look to revise any of those. It's not saying that the council wouldn't hire the clerk and the attorney, it.
Right, just an outline then.
Yeah, so I mean, those could easily be added in, but it's not saying that you wouldn't do that. It's just wasn't included as part of what she had as those roles.
And I think too, the spirit of the meeting was to give the council some way to work with you, Phil, on some of the issues that we're facing, and so I think the focus was on city administrator as the position, so.
Yeah. And this isn't meant to be an all-encompassing list. This is just a handful of things for each of those categories. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Phil? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Again, I would compliment the council. All five council were present, participated, and that isn't the case in all cities all over the state, so pat yourself on the back for that. Are there any audience people that want to address any issue of city business? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications. Want to mention two things. This week, we were supposed to have a in-person visit by the leadership Iowa team, but because of COVID, they're going to do a virtual meeting. It will still be held, and many of our city partners will be a part of that. Phil and I will make some comments. And then Economic Development, Andy Whartonberg from CVB, and Scott from Bridgeview. So that'll be taking place on late Wednesday and all-day Thursday. Thursday afternoon at 1 o'clock, there will be an open house, and that's pretty much virtual too, but it's going to be the opening of the Veterans Office at the old Target Building. And so we're really pleased that that's going to get opened and get into use, and we hope it'll generate some more commercial business in the rest of the building. There's still a lot of space available there. Is there any other comments from council? City staff?
Mayor, you mentioned a thank you for the holiday tree lighting last Friday night.
Yes, that was, I thought, very well done, and again, appreciate Fred Zessinger is the workhorse behind all that, and Fred Jenkins, and then our own councilperson, Holly Berg, did a great job of filming, and so it was livestreamed, and we had a number of people watching that on livestream, so we were pleased about that. Anything else? We go to the council. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, and good night.